The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of the Hunkamian Language Group on whose traditional and unseen territories we teach, learn, and live. Nice to see a full house in here with smiles on your faces. That's even better. Now, we have a busy night here, but we are looking forward to our guest presentation. We have some announcements, trustees. Do they don't have any announcements to read? Trustee Yang.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Briefs regarding the 2025-26 Annual Budget will be accepted without prior notice at the February 19th, 2025, and March 12th, 2025 regular meetings of the board. Please note that budget updates will be made available on the district's budget website. All budget feedback will be considered by the board as part of the board budget process, which is anticipated to be completed by April 23rd, 2025.
Thank you. Trustee Sergeant.
Thank you. January 27th marks the anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz-Birkenau concentration camp and is recognized globally as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. On this solemn day, the Richmond School District pays tribute to the memory of the victims of the Holocaust and honors their survivors who have courageously shared their stories. The district remains steadfast in its commitment to supporting those who identify as being part of the Jewish faith and to fostering learning environments that combat antisemitism and all forms of intolerance, ensuring these lessons are carried forward for future generations.
Thank you. Trustee Larson, you.
Thank you. January 29th marks the anniversary of the 2017 attack on the Islamic Cultural Centre and Mosque in Saint-Foy, Quebec, one of the deadliest mass shootings in Canadian history. On this day, the Richmond School District remembers the victims, their families, and the survivors of this tragic event. Aligned with our strategic plan and priority to equity and inclusion, we commit to taking a stand against all forms of hate and discrimination, including anti-Islamic hate, by fostering learning about anti-oppression, human rights, and social justice in our schools and classrooms. Together, we strive to create inclusive and compassionate environments where every individual feels safe, valued, and respected. Thank you.
Trustee Wong.
Chairman. So Lunar New Year 2025, the Richmond School District wishes everyone a happy and post Paris Lunar New Year. This special time of celebration brings families together to honor traditional share food and exchange gifts, symbolizing joy and renewal. We also take these opportunities to recognize the invaluable contributions of East and Southeast Asian communities to our diverse and inclusive society, which enriches our school and broader community.
Thank you. And trustee Twalney.
Yes, well, every February Canadians are invited to participate in Black History Month festivities and events that honor the legacy and contributions of Black Canadians and their communities. Our district, in our district, Black History Month is an opportunity to teach, learn, and celebrate Black excellence by highlighting the resilience, innovation, and determination of Black individuals and communities. As part of our strategic priority of equity and inclusion, students and staff will engage in meaningful learning opportunities that explore Black history, culture, and achievements. Throughout the month, schools will share their learning, fostering a sense of community and collective celebration of Black excellence.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, folks, Madam Secretary Treasurer, are there any materials not included in the packages available to the public?
Thank you, Chairperson. All meeting materials are available to the public on the district website.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're now going to move on to the adoption of the agenda. Trustees, you have the agenda. Unless there's any additions, can I get a move in a second or trustee sergeant, trustee Yang? Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? Moving on to our presentation briefs and special recognition, we have none for tonight. So we're going to move on to item four, questions from the public. Is there anyone to have questions from the public? Members of the public are invited to come forward with questions regarding agenda items. All right. Okay, now we get to move on to really good stuff. Executive report, Superintendent Yusei.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. Also, this is my favorite part of board meetings when we actually have students in the boardroom. And of course, when you have students, you know, you must, you know, have parents, family members, and of course, we have staff. And we have the proud principal there with a big smile, Susan, and Vice Principal. So around here with our wonderful leaders. Again, I want still the good story. I'll leave that for Assistant Superintendent Thompson to do the honors, to introduce what you're about to see. But just again, special welcome to our students in the boardroom. And of course, trustees, as always, these presentations are very much aligned, tied to our strategic priorities. And over to you, Assistant Superintendent Thompson.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Yusei. Good evening, trustees, staff, and honored guests. It's my pleasure this evening to be introducing a group of students, staff, and parents from Talmi Elementary, who will be sharing a brief overview of the story of the community mural that they created this past fall. This project supported the Talmi community to develop a sense of connection, belonging, and positive personal and cultural identity through literacy and visual arts. And it weaves together goals from both the Inspired learners and equity and inclusion priorities in our current district strategic plan. The mural project provided students an opportunity to develop their writing skills through poetry and enabled them to connect to the personal awareness core competency as they reflected on aspects of their own identity and shared those with their community. The Community Mural incorporates the voices of students, staff, and community members, and we're very excited to hear more from this group tonight. As you can see, we have quite a setup here with microphones, so we're doing our best with the audio. But I know you'll join me in welcoming Ms. Hazen, who's the principal at Talmi, Ms. Jess, who is the vice principal, as well as the students behind me. And I'd like to invite them forward to share their story with us this evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So, and thank you, Assistant Superintendent Thompson, for your introduction. We're really excited to be here this evening. I'm Naomi Hazen, the principal of Talmi School.
And I'm Jess Lovett, the vice principal.
So to begin, we just really briefly like to position the presentation within our school story. Just so you know, for the past three years, our school has been really intentionally focused on building belonging and building a strong sense of community. And part of the reason for that, I'm sure you all know, is that we've seen growth in our school community, and we're going to continue to see that with six new modules on the horizon for September. We've had the tradition over the last three years of starting our school year with a collaborative mural piece, and we've done that every year. But what's kind of special about this year, thank you Ms. Jess for being in charge of the slides, is that this year, as Ms. Thompson highlighted, is we moved into a literacy focus area as well as our belonging focus area. So this mural incorporates student voice, writing, and a lot of their personal reflections through I Am From Poetry along with the visual arts. And then we extended that to including community voice as well. So it's the first time we've had the voice of our families and our staff integrated into a collective piece. And it does this by layering in the kind of interconnections of story. And one thing that was really exciting was when our EAs shared some of their I Am From Poetry, we shared them at a pack meeting. We made connections with the pack families with some of our staff. So that's just a very quick introduction and then to tell you a little bit more about the background.
Okay, so the central part of our mural was inspired by the big book, Belonging, by R. V. Donner. And our literacy connection to the images, it's a nice book, was inspired by the poem, "From," by a original writer and educator and writer who started the global poetry movement. We're excited to share some of this portrait with you tonight. We found that during the process of putting the mural together and thereafter, that stories really brought us together. Connections were made, and they're really inspiring.
And just before we begin, we would like to lead you with this quotation about story as our students share their poetry with you. Stories are powerful. The creation of our story and how we share it has the potential to transform our personal mindsets and the mindset for those we are in touch with. And with that, I would like to invite our MCs, who are leading our student leaders, Maher and Charlotte, to introduce everyone.
Thank you, and good evening, trustees and senior team members.
We are honored to be here this evening to share our I Am From Poetry with you.
As you can see in the mural, there is a variety of shapes surrounding the natural images in the middle.
The handshakes represent the words and stories from all our students.
The heart shapes represents our staff voice.
The star shapes represent our Talmi families, parents, and caregivers. Our families were invited to contribute to our mural during our community welcome event in September.
We would like to introduce our guest tonight.
We have Ms. Talia with us. She's a teacher and parent at Talmi. She will be sharing some examples of the staff voice, the I Am From Poetry, that is part of our mural.
We also have our pack chair here with us this evening. Ms. Scarpino will be sharing some of the parent and family voices represented on our mural.
And last but not least, you will be hearing from all of us, Talmi students from grades five to seven. Thank you.
Our staff, parent, and student representatives will now share their poetry contributions.
Hi, my name is Eric. I'm grade seven, and now I start my poetry. I'm from the Lego that I can be more patient and more creative with and think out of the box. I'm from my unique thoughts and ideas to design my own Lego. I'm from old meaningful history that teaches you how the smartest animal has evolved, how the earth was made, and how the first creatures were made.
My name is Maher, and I'm in grade seven. I am from the bounce of a basketball, the thrill of a point where every moment fuels my passion. I am from the thrill of a soccer match and the sound of a barcicle and the joy of a perfect pass. I am from Damascus, where love is unmatched, but love can be painful at times. I am from Damascus, and Damascus are my people and my language and my homeland. Even though I left early, my heart is stuck there.
My name is Zara, and I'm in grade six. I am from music, my favorite thing in the world, and no matter what type, I'll always feel right. I'm from my piano and bass guitar I play at home. Sometimes I might go a bit crazy, so I give them a loud roar.
My name is Leanne, and I'm in grade seven. I am from Jasmine. What do I say and how do I explain? When I talk about Jasmine, I remember my birthplace, in my eyes, a simple but beautiful country. Speaking about Jasmine reminds me of how the Jasmine would grow on the streets and alleys of my country, Damascus, Syria. I am from Jasmine, a white flower that's like a white art with a disscentive smell that spreads around and makes you feel like joyful and relaxed. Jasmine is a symbol of happiness and beauty. It's a strength and not purity.
I'm Hunter, and I'm in grade seven. I'm from my bed that is a car that my dad made. I'm from a loving family that supports me when I need it. I'm from a sports game that gives me an adrenaline rush every single time. I'm from a snowy white mountain where I get to cruise down on a snowboard.
My name is Oliver, and I-
My name is Maya, and I'm grade five. I'm from long walks in the green walls of forest, quiet whispers in the air, the smell of trees, bright sunlight spilling on my shoulders, and the gentle rustle of animals in their woodland homes.
My name is Oliver, and I'm a grade six. I am from a quiet forest with falling leaves where my family and I enjoy walks. I am from a tall snowy mountain that my family and I snowboard down in speed, turns, jumps, and excitement.
My name is Franco, and I'm in grade six. I am from tap shoes, hearing the clickety-clack upon the floor as my feet float gracefully along the living room wooden boards. I am from dandelions, picking each flower one by one, making each sheet I color more alive than it was before with a heavenly shade of yellow.
My name is Charlotte, and I'm in grade seven. I am from games, where every moment counts while playing. The rush, excitement, and fun you can have. I am from the part of a game where you struggle to place that last piece towards victory. But when you do, the adrenaline kicks in, and you celebrate as loud as possible over your win.
I am sharing with you some of the staff voice tonight. I am from endless golden fields of wheat under the bright blue sky. I am from hot, sunny, sandy, and salty days on the Black Sea. I am from a family who says I love you and thank you. I am from fresh homemade chicken noodle soup served on a Friday night family dinner. I am from an ancient culture and religion. I am from dumplings I make with my grandma on Lunar New Year.
Hi, I'm Shenika, and I'll be sharing some of the parents' voices. I am from a place that is known for warm, brothy foie gras soup and crispy banh mi sandwiches. I am from a loving family. I am from gnocchi mixed and hand-rolled on a board in my grandparents' basement, covered in flour, indented with my tiny fingers, dried and frozen for months of enjoyment. I am from mooncakes I eat with my family. I am from long, warm hugs from my sons. I am pure joy found on the adorable faces of the Talmi students, eager to enjoy the popcorn and treats that the parent volunteers offer them. Their smiles fill my heart to the brim.
We would now like to take two minutes of your time to invite you to participate in contributing to our I Am From mural. And we're going to have our students help out, and we're going to distribute butterfly shapes. The shape that we're going to have that's going to represent your voices, butterflies symbolize transformation. And you can use a suggestion on the template, which we will put up with D10. Advance the slide, and you'll see the poetry template there. And you can just take a few minutes, and you'll have some wonderful helpers who are very experienced, who will come and help out, and we'll just take a few minutes to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, so I, so from my childhood, things that were important to me from that. Okay, oh my goodness. Okay, and do I just write it on here?
I just follow the template.
Oh, Maya. Love what you said up there. Okay, help me out here.
Oh, I am. Yeah.
Do I have to write? What do you think?
I lived in, I lived in the forest.
Actually, right, I am something, right? I am-
You all remember.
I am from-
Did good job.
Future educator.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, we will, first off, notes. And I know trustees will have questions for you or comments. Trustee Sergeant.
Well, that was incredibly powerful, and I had to write down on my butterfly that I'm a school trustee, and I'm really thankful that I am because I get to hear stories like we heard tonight from our students. And you are all so inspiring, and your stories really impact people. And so I just want to say you're awesome humans, and thank you for sharing your story and for trying to help guide us. There wasn't anything better than watching a student guide, our superintendent, who is a, who is a big deal in the district. And to see that learning that was happening and you were the teacher was fantastic. Thank you.
Trustee Larson.
Thank you. What I really, what sticks in my mind often is that staff in a school not only touches the life of a student, but they touch the lives of the family. And the fact that you have included the families and the staff in this story is so rich. It's very touching and very, and when we talk about what belonging means, I really felt the sense of belonging that your students shared and every one of you. The other thing is the fact that you shared your stories with us from your birth country to what was special for you that you brought from being a young child, is that every one of your stories makes up your school story, because it's all a piece of that. And that's so special, those, those stories, when someone looks at them, really tells a lot about your school and who you are. And just one more thing, and that's speaking, I love to hear about your birth country because it brings the world to someone like me who hasn't traveled a lot. So to hear someone sharing the country or wherever that was was very special. So thank you very much.
Trustee Belisa.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I am Rose Belisa, an immigrant like you, from the Philippines, a country where I was birthed, to Canada, a country of my choice, where sake for freedom and where the dignity of every person is accepted, valued, appreciated, and respected for humanity's sake. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Twalney.
Yeah, well, I really appreciated, you know, all your poems. And, you know, they were all so different. It was, it's amazing. But it must feel good to reflect on those, on those things about where you're from and really who you are and the things you value. And I thought it was very heartwarming. And, and, you know, it inspired me because I wrote a whole bunch on my butterfly, too. Because it makes you, it makes you think about those things. You know, we often get busy in our lives and we're not thinking about where we've come from and, and, you know, who, who's helped us, shaped who we are. And, and I think, you know, where we've lived and sharing that with other people is so important to create that sense of belonging and understanding that we're all from maybe different places, but we all create a, a community. So thank you so much for sharing this exercise with us. Really wonderful.
Trustee Wong.
Thank you. So today, tonight, we are really happy and have an opportunity to write my story in the butterfly and get back to Talmi School. So, you know, now you have a multicultural, diverse culture in the school, so you know, each one have his own story. So you can just like have a big project for three years. Okay, so now you can just like have a really respectful for everyone and each other. Thank you.
Trustee Yang.
Thank you very much, Chairperson, and thank you to Ms. Hazen and crew at Talmi Elementary. Memory serves me right, I think I did add a bit of my thoughts in the first, in my first term or my first year as your trustee liaison. So, so happy to see this grow, and I think this is, it speaks to kind of the importance of showcasing our diversity in our district. And I don't want to get emotional because I know some students had shared some very, very hard stories. And, sorry. Just the fact that at such a young age, they're able to share that and have the space to do that, that's very important. So, I'm so sorry. But I do want to extend the kudos to all that you do, and I hope you can take this above and beyond moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Yang. You know, we live in a crazy world, and there's so much hustle and bustle. It's so easy to get lost and caught up in all that. What I liked about what you guys have done tonight is get back to the person, who you are. Because it's very important that you know who you are. It's very important to know where you came from. Because if you know where you came from and you know where you're at right now, then getting to your next place hopefully will be easier. And, you know, your presentation day obviously has had an impact on all of us. And for that, we really appreciate you being here, and thank you to the teachers and principals. I'm going to leave it with Superintendent Yusei. You took part in your getting coached there. Any final comments?
Well, just appreciation and gratitude, and of course, I couldn't top up what you heard from trustees. We're very proud of you. I think, I think you heard that from the board and certainly from everyone here today. I was actually very impressed at the level of ingenuity. And for, you know, students, your great level, that was just incredible. Every single one of those were just, was so impactful, so wonderful. So thank you so much for doing this tonight. We are really, really proud of you.
You know, this is, like I said, a great presentation here thing. And when I look at it, it's like, whoa, all these kids are here and they're doing this. I actually look at beyond that, I think- at beyond that. I think, my God, this is the future. You guys are the future. And as I said before, we kind of live in a kind of a wacky world and, and it's like, what are we going to do? And thing always come back to this, you know, we got these kids in school and, and they're the future and they're the hope. And not to put any pressure on you, but you know, I feel very good when I come to presentations like this because it makes you feel like, you know, we got a future here. So one thing, thank you very much for coming. Parents, thank you for attending as well. Tell us to all the guests who come, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. But if you decide that you do want to leave, we will not be offended. All right.
Take your voice back, your butterflies to our mirror.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thanks, yes. Okay. Is there any more to your executive report that you wanted to, no, no, that's.
That was pretty tough.
Hey trustees, let's keep moving along with our agenda. Item six is the approval of minutes from prior meetings. We have a record of an incoming held Wednesday, December the 11th, and another one held Wednesday, December 23rd. We do have a regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, December 11th for approval. Minutes are in your package. Unless there's any errors or omissions, kind of get a mover and a seconder. Trustee Sergeant, Trustee Yang, thank you. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Business arising from prior minutes are, are any? Moving on to new business, we have a item A, strategic plan, engagement timelines, shaping the next years, five years together. We have a report from our superintendent.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. I think we saw tonight in this boardroom a moment ago, the reason why we do what we do, both as trustees, as elect, folks who are elected to, to oversee the education of our young people in our city. And the, as you correctly put, put it, Mr. Chair, the future, future generation and our future leaders. This work happens daily in our schools. It happens in classrooms. It happens in communities, with staff, obviously with parents, and all partners. So that's what makes it, that, that, that's what makes learning and that's what makes public education the, the best that we can do to prepare the future for our young people. And that future is reflected in our strategic plan. And that plan is one that directs the board or that guides the board, the work of the board going forward. So as we start a new year, 2025, of course, Happy New Year, Happy Lunar New Year. We are excited that we're embarking on, on a very important journey in our district with the development of a new strategic plan that will shape the, the future of our district over the next five years. The board's policy is quite clear. Your policy indicates very clearly that every five years, the board shall develop a strategic plan that builds on the success of the current plan. And I think it's important for us to recognize, and I think we saw evidence of that tonight, developing a new strat, strategic plan that builds on the good work and the excellent work that is happening across our district. It's an undertaking that is, that is, that is exciting and that allows us to, to do the work as we move forward. So the report that is included in the public board package outlines the process and timelines for engaging the Richmond community, our students, employees, families, our partner groups, and everyone will connect it in this, in our community to gather inputs that will inform the 2025, 2030 strategic plan for the Richmond School District. The board has retained the services of a consultant to walk alongside senior staff to carry out this important work. Consultations are set to take place from February to June of this year, and with the goal of having the strategic plan finalized and ready for board approval, December 2025. Opportunity, opportunities for input will include, include an online survey, focus groups, community gatherings across the city, and the details will be shared widely on our website and with all our partners starting Monday, January 27th. It's when all that communication will go out. Speaking of communication, we have a comprehensive plan that has been crafted by our wonderful communications team to ensure transparency and to encourage participation, offering regular updates and opportunities for engagement. By effectively conveying the purpose and process of this, of this undertaking, we are confident that we'll build a plan that is commonly shared and by everyone who has a, in this, in this district, ensuring that voice is valued and that every student and every employee who wishes to do so as an opportunity to provide feedback that will inform the strategic plan and that will guide us going forward. So before the board tonight, it's a recommendation from staff that the board approved the 2025, 2030 strategic plan, engagement timelines outlined in appendix A of the reports for the board, before the board. Our communications team has indicated, has prepared a detailed plan, but to really, to get us to introduce the, this process, to launch this process, we've put together a video that will be shared with, with, with everyone, both internal and external, to, to really get us started in a good way. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Really excited about this and invite you to turn your attention to the video.
The Richmond School District acknowledges and thanks the First Peoples, the Hunkamena Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. Every journey begins with a first step. In the Richmond School District, our strategic plan sets the path for guiding our students towards success and preparing them for a bright future. Through thoughtful planning, we create opportunities that help every student thrive. Our current strategic plan has resulted in significant and meaningful changes over the past five years. We have nourished welcoming and engaging school environments, modernized facilities, optimized technology, and supported our staff along the way. Thanks to these efforts, we've enhanced learning for every student in Richmond. In Richmond, every step of a student's journey is supported by a safe, respectful, and inclusive environment. We believe diversity is our strength, and equity and inclusion are the foundation of meaningful learning experiences. As students grow, our commitment to academic excellence ensures strong results in literacy, numeracy, and secondary school completion. By embedding digital literacy across the curriculum and thoughtfully exploring the use of tools like artificial intelligence, we aim to equip students and staff with the skills and confidence to thrive in the future. Our success is built on the foundation of collaboration. Dedicated staff, supportive parents, and engaged partners have come together to create a vibrant learning community where every student can achieve their goals. Our vision for the future is inspired by you. As you look forward to the next five years, what are your thoughts on how the district should enhance learning, achievement, and well-being for all students and staff? And when our students complete secondary school, what do you want them to know, think, and care about? Your voice is vital in shaping a plan that will guide the next chapter of learning in the Richmond School District. Visit our website at sd38.bc.ca to share your insights and help us build a brighter tomorrow for every student.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Over to the board.
Okay. We have a recommendation that the Board of Education approves the 20, sorry, 2025, 2030 strategic plan, engagement timelines outlined in appendix A. We were, so threw me off there. Trustee Sergeant, second by Trustee Wong. Any discussion, questions?
I just, if I could, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm really impressed with the approach and the well-documented approach of how we're going to go about talking to our community and really engaging in a two-way conversation. And I know we had a look at this and we got to give feedback and lots of people did have feedback into the actual engagement plan. I just wanted to thank the superintendent and staff for really taking just the engagement plan really serious, because I think it suggests what, what the process is going to be like moving forward. And I'm, and I'm really proud of it. And I'm proud that we're, we're engaging with the community so intensely and asking their views about what would make a, a better system. And just to let others know, we had an MLA meeting this weekend, last week, and we also invited them to share their thoughts and their constituents' thoughts. So I just wanted to thank staff and I'm very proud of how we can engage our community. Thank you.
Trustee Tavani?
Yeah, well, I echo Trustee Sergeant's comments. You know, strategic planning in our district has come a long way since I started out as a trustee many years ago. And, and I'm really proud of our last strategic plan and then moving forward with, with the updating of, of the 25 to 2030 plan. And I just had a question, that video is amazing. So what are we planning? Where is that video going to live? Are we farming that out places? What, what exactly are we going to do with that video? Because?
If I can just invite our communications officer to speak to this.
Through the chair, we'll be sharing the video on our district website, on our internal website, Richnet. We'll also be sharing a letter out to all parents internally, to all staff. We'll be sending a letter to partner groups and those letters will all contain the link to the video as well.
Okay, so the link will be in the letters that you sent out.
Yeah, okay, as well as social media.
Perfect. And what about social media? You're going to put it on social media too?
Definitely.
Great. That's wonderful. And I just noticed that there's a very broad number of groups to, you know, that we're going to be sharing this with. So I think it's, it's just an excellent plan. And the video is fantastic, I think. You know, that will be engaging enough that people will want to learn more. Thank you.
Trustee Belisa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the video presentation's job well done. And the message of the vision, the mission of the school district, you know, are clearly delineated. And there, what's even more interesting would be the, the invitations to the different people in our district to have some comments and feedback for more continuous improvement, whatever we have in the district. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, having no other question, all in favor, recommendation? Those recommendations carried. Okay, we're going to move on to item B, our 2025, 26 annual budget consultation. We have a report from our secretary treasurer attached. Would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, thank you Chairperson. The school district is embarking on its annual budget process for the upcoming school year. The budget will continue to place the priority on aligning the fiscal plan with the priorities and goals set out in our strategic plan, and that is to focus on the learners and student success. The annual budget consultation process provides a opportunity for our education partner groups and also our community members to participate in the budget process. Members of the community are encouraged to ask questions and submit your feedback regarding budget through email or by writing to the Secretary Treasurer's office. We also like to play a video. The following video will show a summary of the district's annual budget, annual budget and budget process. Thank you.
Welcome to the Richmond School District Budget Blueprint, where we build a clear picture of how our district's budget supports schools, programs, and students. Every structure needs strong financial planning. In the Richmond School District, the annual budget demonstrates how we allocate resources to deliver on our mission and support student success. The annual budget is built using three key elements: the operating budget, the special purpose fund, and the capital fund. The special purpose fund represents expenditures designated for specific purposes. For example, funds like the Classroom Enhancement Fund are allocated to maintain an optimal learning environment for all students. The capital fund accounts for budget areas related to capital construction and asset acquisition. It includes funding provided by the government and the board to support major projects like building upgrades and infrastructure improvements. The largest and most critical part of the blueprint is the operating budget. This portion of the budget ensures the stability of our schools and day-to-day operations. The majority of the operating budget is allocated to school operations. This includes salaries for teachers, administrators, and support staff, as well as supplies and services that keep schools running smoothly. A small portion of the operating budget supports district administration, which includes governance and central management. The operating budget also includes funding dedicated to maintaining school buildings and information technology infrastructure, ensuring safe and modern learning environments. Transportation is also funded through the operating budget, ensuring students have safe and reliable access to education. Moving to the next section of the blueprint, we see reserves and contingencies. These funds are set aside for future needs such as technology upgrades, equipment replacements, and unexpected emergencies. This planning ensures the district remains adaptable and sustainable. Reserve funding is used to support future projects and contingencies, safeguarding our long-term stability. Finally, every strong structure needs an outside perspective, in this case, from you, the school community. Policies like 601 and 601R ensure that the budget process is inclusive and transparent, inviting feedback from the public. Your voice helps shape our financial plans. The Richmond School District invites you to visit budget.st38.bc.ca to contribute your ideas, ask questions, and learn more about the budget consultation process. Together, we can design a financial plan that ensures every student thrives. Thank you for helping us build a strong future for Richmond schools and support student success. Together, we're turning plans into progress.
Any questions regarding the annual budget consultation? Not seeing any. Can move on. Next is item nine, questions from the public. So it is an opportunity from members of the public invited to come forward with questions regarding tonight's agenda items. Anyone care to step forward?
Evidently, I've got a lot to write. Liz Babersock, President, Richmond Teachers Association. I actually wasn't going to ask a question night, tonight, but I enjoyed that video. And especially, you know, highlighting of the Classroom Enhancement Fund, because that is a significant amount of money that goes into not only hiring teachers, but also support staff and to support elements of the collective agreement, which are really about the supports for classrooms, both class size composition and specialist teachers. And so it's always good to draw attention to that, especially as we've come out of an election, we have new people in government. Not that they're going to necessarily watch it, but it is a good reminder for the community about the importance of funding and that even when an election is over, the advocacy continues. So I've got two questions. One is, I know that the, the amended budget is delayed. Are there any concerns that there might be some delays with the regular announcements for funding? Because we normally receive them around spring break. I know that the ministry has the mandate letters out now, but have they given an update on terms of what we can expect with funding? I know that the ministry has the mandate letters out now, but have they given an update on terms of what we can expect with funding?
Yeah, um, through the chair, thank you, uh, Mrs. Baberstock for that question. Uh, in previous years, the uh, confirm or recalculated funding based on the September thirtieth enrollment. And typically was done uh, at the end of December. So this year it has been delayed until the end of January. Uh, yeah, we we have been um, uh, in a conversation with our ministry staff. As of now, we haven't heard anything substantial, or we we haven't heard any uh, structural changes to the edu- education funding formula or funding model. Um, so um, we um, of course, we're waiting for the announcement and um, the um, amended budget will continue. And uh, we uh, the the ministry hasn't changed the budget deadline, so we'll continue working on the amended budget.
Okay, thanks. And then my second question is really just more um, for uh, trustees and it's related. Because of course budgets are all about money and advocacy and uh, whether you've had any opportunity. Or will find opportunity in the near future to meet with new MLAs or even the Minister of Education and childcare. And if you do, I I certainly know that we would welcome the opportunity to join where we could. Um, thank you.
Any more? Come on.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent. President list. So um, my name's Connie. Uh, come from Burnett School. And also the president of the RDPA. Um, I'm here because I just received. My school, uh, parent gave me a email and then I just print now and uh, before meeting. So um, can I just read that letters?
Relate to the agenda tonight?
Yes.
It is? What part of the agenda?
That's uh, because uh, last time I was a share this uh, because the school district. Uh, at the education about the medical science course. Is about it tonight?
It's actually B A A courses.
B A course? Oh, you're on the agenda.
You owe me two coffees, okay?
Got it.
Anyway, okay, anyway, so the parents said, uh, our school attend Burnett Second School. We hear that two school will be at a medical science course to degree eleven and grade twelve next year. And then um, this is a very good subject. Uh, thank you very much, school district for adding such a subject to help children. Uh, more he- more healthy related uh, loadage. But we also learning that for um, this is subject reason. There are only two school Richmond as the uh, pilots. So may we take the. To application for Burnett children to um, for this is subject to our school. This is the parent asked for because they really support. Uh, school district to add this is subject for to support uh, children to learn. Um, healthy and then more learn about the uh, mental health and yes. And safety or something like that. Yeah, so that's why um, I just print out this letter and I will give you right now.
I just want to mention that, I mean, the issue raised is an operational one. And uh, basically, that's where we leave to the staff to sort of, because that's where the trustees, I mean, we're not familiar. Uh, with the day to day, you know, courses and and uh, the limits in terms of how many kids and that kind of stuff and just in general. And so uh, we will, I will pass this on to our, to our staff and uh, they will take it from there.
Yeah, um, oh, sorry.
Yeah, can I just point out, it it's not really about safety and mental health. This is uh, it's a full year course that enables students to complete their Canadian Red Cross standard first aid. And uh, first responders certification. And it offers training in advanced first aid and pre hospital care. So that that's what the course is about that you're referring to. And it it sounds like a great course in my opinion.
Yeah, sounds great. So uh, that's why this is a big uh, great uh, course. So that's why I share this information to parent and then they really fully support district. Um, uh, and also teacher union. So yeah, please give them more money to make more discourse. For uh, science eleven and twelve. Yeah, this is all the parent hopes. Yeah. And um, yeah, the second one, I would like to say a beautiful slideshow. Easy, simple, and I understand, okay? This time I didn't lost. Okay, anyway, thank you so much. If you can share that uh, slideshow to RDPA and then we can share in the uh, RDPA meeting. It's possible.
Alright.
Yeah, thank you. And Gong He Fa Chai, Happy New Year.
Thanks. Alright, any more questions from the public? Alright, let's move on. Um, we have our standing committee reports. Uh, now trustees, we don't have to give the dates because it's all written down here. Uh, some of you, there is some work to do, some uh, recommendations to pass and so forth. Or if you want to provide a a a brief uh, a report back at your last meeting, that's that's also fine as well. Uh, starting with our audit committee, uh, Chairperson Yang, uh, is there anything you want to add?
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much, Chairperson. Uh, yes, so Audit Committee, uh, we did discuss a number of in camera matters. And our next meeting is going to be uh, March fourth, twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Education Committee, and that would be Chairperson Larson.
Thank you. We had a wonderful um, meeting, our last meeting, uh, which um, Ms. Wang just referred to with regard to the. The uh, board, I could probably. Thank you. And I have recommendation uh, that I can read. Uh, that the Richmond Board of Education approved the attached newly developed board authority authorized courses. For implementation in the twenty twenty five, twenty six school year.
Okay, so moved. I'm looking for a seconder. Trustee Sergeant, any discussion? Or do you want, would you like to speak to some more or?
I think um, it's pretty clear what 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 we're looking for. There are some fabulous courses. I I don't know if anybody else has anything that they want to add. Go ahead.
Any questions, trustee? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, trustee Wong, and then trustee to Blotany.
Thank you, Chairperson. I have a question that I I just asked before. This uh, uh, B A A course after the the board approval. And after we need to uh, support the document. And the form to the Ministry of Edu- Education of uh, childcare. Is that we guarantee or will be approved? And that that all the cup, the course is implement on the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six? That's my question.
What what would the chair, if I can, if I can invite the assistant superintendent, this, or uh, NASA talk to respond to to this place. Thank you.
Sure, thank you for the question. Thanks. Yes, you're correct. Um, this uh, these courses, once approved by the Board of Education this evening. Will be submitted to the Ministry of Education for their approval. And we will attach course codes to these courses and be offering them in some of our schools in the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Okay.
So uh, one one more question is that?
Yeah.
Is that could be be A A courses can just like teach in one school for both semester?
Again, through the chair, uh, if if uh, over to the assistant superintendent to respond?
Sure, um, the courses are offered at select schools as we heard earlier. And in some, in our schools, uh, they may be offered in one or both semesters. This really depends on student interest um, and teacher availability.
I I just tracked the um. Website of the Ministry of Education, I just, they say that just uh, can just run one semester, not for both. I just really care, just want to clarify.
Can I clarify? So uh, these are one semester courses, but the same course can run again within the school. So typically though, these courses are offered once. Um, but pending student interest, I'm not aware of the inability to offer them more than once. But students only take these courses once. They are elective courses and there is no prerequisite for board authority authorized courses. Thank you.
Just asking anything else? Sorry, oh, more hands. Uh, trustee. Oh, I read this level. Go ahead. One, two, three.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to to um, mention that. You know, I think it's great that we have this uh, medical science course. Um, we had met and we had some presentations by some students um, last school year. Uh, who were first responders and really, you know, begging for this, this kind of training. Um, across the district really, and funded training um, for these courses. So uh, I think it's it's very important. Um. We have first responders in our schools already and they and they help a great deal. We've heard about how they've been, they've treated even um, staff members. Very serious, staff member that had a very serious fall. So um, I think it, I think, you know, it's really fantastic that we're, that we're gonna offer this. And also the recreational leadership. That one looks like a really interesting course um, for grade tens. And uh, you know, it offers them opportunities to learn some skills in organizing um, different events. And uh, fundraising and time management, goal setting and community volunteering. So um, all the courses look great and I'd be happy to have approval.
Uh, trustee Yang?
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Uh, just wanted to commend staff for bringing forward four new B A A courses. The last time we saw a B A A course was uh, almost two years ago. So it's nice to see continuous uh, uh, update and and you know, because largely the the courses do reflect the learning needs. Um, the current, uh, at real time uh, in our classroom. So I I do commend staff for that. Um, I had a quick question just around the course catalog process. I think um, uh, at Education Committee, we sort of delved into this. But um, but just for clarity, once a course is uh, approved and is uh, in the district's course catalog. From there, there would be opportunities to uh, to have courses beyond um, the original school it was intended for. Is that correct? My understanding it.
That's correct. It becomes part of our catalog of courses that we're offering in our district and we can pull them into other schools. Uh, pending, of course, staff that are qualified to teach these courses.
Certainly, and I think resources and, you know, having that uh, contingent of students wishing to um. Uh, take this elective, uh, those are all important factors. But um, I I think uh, if staff can also take an advise, uh, under advisement that um, you know, we do have Richmond Virtual School as well. And so um, you know, perhaps there could be uh, other. Um, options to explore how we can make uh, courses more, uh, not only just B A As, but I guess um, just courses uh, all in general. To make them more accessible for for learners. Um, and then just the last comment around um, our board policy on B A As. Because, you know, we we see, we. We give approval once it comes to to the table. Um, but uh, as far as I, if I'm not mistaken. Um, just going through our um, list of policies, um. We have very old policies on, you know, uh, how these sort of thing works. And so I think uh, we as a board, I think uh, it's incumbent on us to tidy up our policies and procedures when it comes to B A A policy. So there's a clear process on how to, you know, uh, for example, yearly updates or just uh, information. So that the board is well informed um, uh, that way. And so um, I lo- again, looking to staff to see if uh, we can uh, get that going for for policy uh, on the policy angle. And but all in all, um, great job and happy to support this. Thanks.
Hey, trustee believe you give a hand up?
Yes, yeah.
All about trust.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and thank you for this uh. Outstanding work for this B A A courses. And my question would be um, I know there there are requirements from the ministry and we have complied that and that the needs. My question is, uh, what are the override overarching criteria? Or rational or offering courses or future B A courses?
Thank you for the question. So the Ministry of Education, as you've pointed out, does have a number of criteria. And these include ensuring that the courses that we are offering as board authority authorized courses. Do not substantially overlap existing ministry course curriculum. Um, of course, the intention of these courses is to meet local interest and passions of our students and our teachers. Um, these are elective courses and they can be used in the graduation program. They are grade ten, eleven, and twelve courses um, offered to students as part of the electives that they can take towards graduation.
And determining the local needs, how do you relate to that?
Typically, how this happens is, we may know through student voice, a number of challenge, channels within our schools. But as well, when there are teacher interests and passions in a particular area and those align with a course. And the intention is that students may benefit from that learning. We move forward with board authority authorized courses as you see now. We do have members of our curriculum team who look at these courses to ensure that they do have strength in terms of the learning outcomes. The know do understand format of the ministry's criteria. And then, of course, they're offered to students and students decide by their interest um, by way of registration. So courses do require a certain number of students to register before they run.
Thank you. Trustee Sergeant?
I just wanted to say a big kudos to uh, the staff on the ground. I was at uh, Education Committee and the teachers that were bringing this forward were clearly passionate. And clearly put in a ton of work. Um, it it's not easy to bring forward a B A A course. And uh, I was just really impressed with um, they were very student focused, that this would be good for our students, for our school right now. That it would help build community and everything they were saying was around what would be helpful for students. And to have passion like that coming from staff and then back it up with with doing all the work. Uh, to to write a course, adjust a course, and then go through the process. Uh, and then I was also really impressed with there, I think um, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But there were a couple of them that had, were running in an earlier grade. And they thought it would be really beneficial that we had the grade above or below to keep the continuum going. And so I just really want to applaud, um, I I hope, I know we don't forget. But this is staff driven and passion of for their students. And so I really wanted to also thank district staff because I know uh, you support the school to to make their vision happen. And uh, so thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, we're gonna move on from education to facility.
By the border.
We had a recommendation, sorry. Um, recognition, uh. Been moved and seconded. All in favor? Post? Recognition carried. Okay, moving on to facilities and building committee. That's my committee. Um. We actually had a short meeting at our last one, but uh, things are fairly stable. We're moving along with our our different projects. I actually went to Dixon School to see and I'm, what a lot of work uh, uh, going on there. And uh, but uh, they've got a very experienced principal who loves the uh, loves the reconstruction and everything. And uh, you know, everything's under control. So facility and buildings are are doing well. Moving on to finance and legal committee, uh, we have a couple of recommendations. Trustee Sergeant?
Thank you, um, Chairperson. I'd like to move the first recommendation that whereas the Board of Education of School District Thirty Eight Richmond. is paying for expenses incurred by the trustees in the discharge of their duties. Be it resolved that in accordance with the School Act, the Board of Education and School District 38 Richmond approves trustees expenses paid during the three month period ending in December 31st, 2024 in the amount of $5,473.42.
Well, moved, looking for a secondar? Trustee Larson. Trustee Sergeant, do you want to speak to it? There anything else you want to add?
No, thank you.
All right, any questions? Okay, ask for the recommendation. All in favor? Opposed? Carried?
The second recommendation is around facility rental rates. And there was a, I'm not sure if staff wants to speak to it, but there was a report. We had a really good discussion about it and from that came this recommendation that the Board of Education approved the non-commercial, sorry, I'm reading from my phone, not-for-profit and commercial-for-profit facility rental rates reflecting a 5% increase for the 2025-2026 school year as presented in the report.
Moved, a secondar? Trustee Wong, thank you.
And I would like to just highlight that the rental rates that we charge really are break even and that with inflation and other costs rising every year, we have to make sure that we, we keep that belief. And so this is a minimal amount to increase to make sure we cover our charges and make sure that our community still can use our facility, but that we make sure it doesn't affect the operating funding.
Are there any questions? Trustee Yang.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. So I, I have not supported the, the rate increases for the last two times this has come to a vote. I understand that in, in the staff report, it has highlighted that the rates are supposedly revenue neutral. I don't see in the report on the specific of the expenses that were occurring to that. So I, I do have my doubts, but I, I think we can go on and on about what's, what's funded and unfunded in our district. And then at the end of the day, our district always strives to ensure that we meet the goals of our learners and we meet the goals of our district. And I think part of, part of what makes our community so strong is we have folks that do amazing work for our learning community, whether it's extracurriculars or other opportunities for learning and they do use our space. And so I am concerned about the, the rate increases, particularly for the non-commercial category. And just want to end by saying that our work does not gets done, our work does not get done in isolation of the community. So I always urge myself and urge folks to ask the question of how we can make our facilities, which we steward and, and, and keep well maintained. How do we make those more accessible for, for our learning communities and beyond? So fortunately, I appreciate the staff's work and their hard work in maintaining our facilities. It is very hard work, but I won't be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Wong.
To Chairperson, I would like to ask that if the, the School District Facility Rental Out, is that I have any, just put in the School Act? And is that not for benefit? Run out the, the money, the, the fund, it's not for benefit? Is it just, just cover the cost of the, what, what the, the property rent outweigh? Is that?
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you, Trustee Wong, for that question. The School Act doesn't have a specific requirement in terms of all the school facility rentals. But it does have a section relating, one of the regulations associated with the School Act, it does have a, a regulation requirement in terms of the childcare space rental. So the child, childcare space rental, school districts may charge to the users of the, the spaces on a cost recovery basis. So what we're doing here is, number one is we do encourage community use of our school spaces. And we go through the priority. Number one is school use, student use and, and parent use. And then number two, we go to the city use. And then finally, we go to, when, when we have the space and time, we do allow community to use. We actually encourage community. Many community groups do use our school spaces. And we do that in a spirit of cost recovery. Because if we don't do cost recovery, there is, the implication is that we're taking resources out of the K to 12 classes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Blomney.
Yeah, well, you know, I hear concerns from Trustee Yang and, and I, you know, understand them. However, you know, there was a time where we were not doing adjustments to facility rental rates. And, and then, you know, an audit was done and it was found that we were not recovering our costs at all. And it put us in a very difficult position because we had to raise the rates considerably. It brought a lot of concerns from the community and a lot of questions. And trustees had to face that and move ahead to, to make sure that we were covering costs and not, you know, going, providing, you know, custodial costs and things like that on, and that were not being recovered. And that would then affect the operating budget, which then affects students. So it's important to adjust these rates. We learned our lesson, that was quite a while ago. But I think it's important that we do these adjustments on a regular basis. So I'll be a port, supporting the motion or the recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Blomney. Trustee Beliza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern is the needs of the nonprofit organization. So my question would be, is this increase based on experience or future in anticipations of the future needs of the district or the community?
Yes, through the chair. Thank you, Trustee Beliza, for that question. So it is informed by both the historical, historical expenditure data, informed by the historical data, number one. Number two is what we have received by the Facilities Department is that we're going to see significant increases in cost of maintaining school facilities over the next few years. And the majority of the increases are primarily driven by rate increases from utility and service providers. For example, BC Hydro, Fortis BC, Metro Vancouver, City of Richmond. And trustees, you may have heard the Metro Vancouver area, there's a significant increase in cost because of flood, flood protection and related infrastructure upgrades and updates because, because of aging infrastructure. So those are driving the costs of utility service provides, utility products and services. So yes, twofolds. One is informed by historical data and the other one is projected increase in utility rates.
Okay. Comment. I think it's great that we use our facilities and let the community groups use them. Also, there's a cost involved to that. I would hate to see, you know, regular programming, having money taken away from that to, to subsidize, you know, the hockey team that's going into the gym or whatever. From what I've seen and what I've read, you know, we're not, not, this is basically a break even process. And the reality of costs and, you know, increase in hydro and so forth is, is a reality. And if we don't do it, as they found out, you know, several years ago, you end up paying for it one way or the other. So, all right. On that note, if I have no more questions, I'm going to read the recommendation that the Board of Education approved the non-commercial. Yeah, I know. Oh, okay. Well, I was just going to read it again. Facility rates reflecting a 5% increase for the 2025-25-26 school year as presented here. And all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Recorded. Thank you. Trustee Sergeant, anything else from your department? Okay, we're moving on to
I don't know.
Policy Committee.
Got left here, hats, when they.
Trustee Blomney, you've got a couple of recommendations.
Pencils. Yes, Policy Committee has two recommendations or one recommendation, one notice of motion. I will read the recommendation, look for a secondar and then I'll give the background. That the Policy Committee recommends to the Board of Education that the draft rewrite of Policy 103 Bylaw complaints and appeals by students, parents and the public be referred to the partner group review process from January 23rd to March 23rd, 2025.
Looking for a secondar? Trustee Yang, great. All in favor?
Well, do you want me to just speak to the background for?
Should.
Quickly. So policy, quite often will bring forward rewrites to existing policies or regulations for the board's consideration. And all policy rewrites or revisions required, require support from the Policy Committee, approval at a public meeting of the Board of Education. So our staff have conducted quite an extensive review of complaints and appeals policy from a number of the metro districts and other jurisdictions and information from the Ministry of Education, also from the Office of the Ombudsman. And the Office of the Ombudsman has also developed a guide to assist public sector organizations with policy development. So there was a, this draft rewrite was needed to provide greater clarity for parents, public staff and trustees regarding the distinction between district complaints procedures versus appeal procedures. And it's very important that, that we have this policy in place and updated to guide us, you know, when we do have appeals come forward. So thank you for the work of staff on rewriting the policy and doing all the homework and, and checking out all the other other districts and their work. And it's been to Policy Committee. So it will, you know, the motion is to put it into stakeholder or partner group review and to come back March 23rd and for final review. And then hopefully will be recommended, recommendation and recommended and approved by May 21st Board Meeting.
Thank you. Do we have any questions around this recommendation? Trustee Beliza.
I know this is to, to refer to the partner groups, but in the interest of the Board of Education or the Office of the Superintendent, I don't know if we have a practice where complaint started, for example, and referred to the principal. I don't know if we have any idea or, or requirements to document or record those complaints. I know it, we can only intervene when there is an appeal. However, when there is a complaint, we don't know how many are resolved and how many were it's being resolved. To give an idea of what kind of complaint are they? I don't know if that would be helpful to the board to know this kind of information or to the Office of the Superintendent with those kind of information. Just a question.
I, I through the chair, if I may, if I may respond, as you can appreciate, thank you, Trustee Beliza, for the question. A similar question was posed actually during the committee meeting, similar to the question posed by the trustee. Trustees can appreciate that, given the size of our district, on a daily basis, staff do such an amazing job. It's actually remarkable, the level of complaint that comes up to my office. Very, very few. Of course, in any system, there will be, from time to time, there will be complaints and, and we deal with those complaints as they arise. But I think it speaks to the level of care and professionalism of our staff that those, but specific to your question in terms of collecting information, there are, there are a number of factors that makes that really difficult to do. There are confidentiality, there are issues around privacy. There are different ways, complaints range from little exchange to something more, more, more serious. And again, depending on the nature of the complaint, are we talking about student, student? We're talking about student employees and that's a different or parent complaint related to learning. So we don't collect complaints and record them centrally, if that is the, the, the question. And we don't do so for, there is some of the reasons that I've just alluded to in terms of privacy, confidentiality and so on. But at the school level, when complaints do come up, we do ensure that our process, so staff, principals, staff, well, teaching and support staff follow the process to ensure that, again, those things are addressed in ways that are, that reflect our commitment to making sure that, as a learning organization, that students are learning from their, their mistakes, so to speak. And so those mistakes, I mean, those complaints may result in discipline, depending on the nature of what the complaint is for the students. And so that, that's my response, that would be my response to you in terms of, in terms of, through the chair again, in terms of.
If, if there is a complaint and referred to the principal, just for example, with malice towards none, is, or is, is this, this information also because it is an operational aspect or of the district? Is your office being informed by those complaint?
Well, through the chair, the reason why we have, we, we, we trust that principals are following policies and processes that we have, that a district. So there's a district code of conduct and then there is obviously school code of conduct aligns with the district. I, I am not privy to every single complaint that a principal deals with. And quite frankly, I don't, I don't expect to to be apprised because that's their role and principals know when it's necessary, that comes through either the Assistant Superintendent or to my office or what have you. And, but again, and I appreciate the question because it really gives us, gives me an opportunity again to really emphasize the good work happening in our schools, in the system. And I can, having worked in different jurisdictions, given the size of our school district, our students by and large are very, are quite, are quite pleasant to work with. In the sense that we are very, I'm not suggesting that we don't have complaints, but the level of complaints in our district is one, it, given the size of our district, it's in no way cause for concern in terms of what actually gets to my office. So thank you for that.
Thanks for your comments and explanation.
Right, if there are no more questions, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Recognitions carried. And we have one final notice of motion?
Yep. We have a notice of motion to the February 19th meeting of the board and that a recommendation will be presented to approve minor revisions to Policy 103 Collaboration and Community. Sorry. Policy 103 R, A, Foundations for Learning and Policy 103 R, B, Complaints and Appeals by Staff. And these are just minor board revisions to policies that have been really that um have been really scrutinized through our D E I lens and our checklist for policy regulations and guidelines and revision and development and also terminology um uh with in indigenous context. So uh many of these policies have been coming forward for um uh approval, but they're minor revisions. So that one is coming up.
Right. Uh, any questions for trustee DeBlatini regarding notice of motion?
A second.
Don't need anything yet. Save it for February nineteenth.
Yeah, we don't vote on this one. Okay, seeing that there are no questions, trustee DeBlatini, anything else regarding um Policy Committee?
Uh, no. Um, we held meeting January thirteenth and there's one scheduled February tenth at eleven AM.
Okay, moving along. Item eleven is Board Committee and Representative Reports. We have nothing from the council, our board liaison committee, our B C S T A, our B C P C.
B C P C, yeah.
I I I just want to know is that we have uh one is on November twenty-nine, Wednesday for the Council Board Liaison Committee?
I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, the
Is that we have a November twenty-nine on Wednesday in the for Council Board Liaison Committee?
The Council Liaison, the Council Board Liaison Committee is is coming up.
November twenty-nine, eh?
No, before, it's in um, it's, I can't, I don't have the exact date.
Yeah, I don't have my
I think in a week or two, I believe. Yeah, but the last one was
So we need to write on there, so
Update.
Yeah, to update one.
The next, the next
Yeah.
Month reported.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it hasn't come forward yet.
Any other questions regarding our comments of B C P?
Oh, counsel.
Yeah, I don't sure handle that.
Well, mine was for B C P C.
Hey.
B C P C, I'll be attending at the end of the month, the A G M. Um, it's two days at the Coast Hotel. So I will bring back a report on um, you know, what's transpired there and there'll be motions that I voted on and things like that, so.
And trustee Hamaguchi, um, the um B C S T A uh will be holding uh February twenty-second on a Saturday morning uh online. So anything I get from that uh prior to that we need, I will bring to everybody and let what
That's provincial.
And then obviously report afterwards.
Thank you very much. Item twelve, correspondence. Uh, we did not receive any or send any out. Um, so on that note, I'm looking for a move in a second there for adjournment. Trustee Yang and trustee Beliza, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, folks, for attending. Uh, drive home safely. You might be slippery out there and see you all again. Sleepy.